P I.
Okay.
Dylan, okay. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Fraser Park Public Utility District's meeting for Thursday, December 12th, 2024. Our regular meeting agenda, we are starting the meeting at 4:00 P. M. And we do not have anyone in our additional teleconference location that we had written down. There's a teleconference option on Zoom, which some people are attending. Okay, so we're going to call this meeting order. We're going to start with a pledge to the flag. If you can all rise, please. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, okay. Oral call directors, Director Garcia.
Here.
Director Nyman.
Here.
Director Kelling.
Here.
Director Gibson, I believe is absent, and I am Director Schonberg, and I am present. So that's four directors. We do have a quorum. So we will move on to item two on the agenda, discussion vote, adjust agenda if necessary. Are there any adjustments?
A D, do we need to go into closed session?
Yes, I think we should.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and are we going to want to do the record retention stuff from the director? Or anything else that we wanted directors on? Rotating, I guess we have to do rotating board positions whether she's here or not. Anything else we want to table?
I think, I think we should just go through and then if we need to table.
Hold forward, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so on to item three, public comments. This is for items not currently listed on the agenda. Will you limit this to about five minutes? Thank you. Anyone from the public have a comment not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move on to item four, report of officers. Start with myself, the president. I came in and signed the LAFCO letter talking about the common sense exemption. I signed it late, my apologies. I spaced out, so I just signed it.
This week?
This week? Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, I don't remember what day that was, Monday, I think, or Tuesday, yeah. So anyway, but that's signed, sorry about that. I meant to come in earlier and then forgot all about it. So that is signed, and I also did one of the claims right after the meeting.
After the meeting last, yeah.
Meeting, but I think that's about it of the things that I've signed. So on to the vice president.
I've been at this time.
How about the secretary?
I think a week or so, although I signed some minutes, but other than that.
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't done anything.
Okay, treasurer?
Yeah, we made some transfers. I could not log on. It took, so Brahma did it. But he transferred from the Fraser Park to the L O W planning, $466.60 for director's fees. And then from planning to revenue operating, transferred $53.04 for staff recovery fees. And then from planning.
Plan forty-five.
Yeah, plan forty-five. And then planning to revenue, $566.66 for director's fees from plan forty-six. And then we did the revenue operating to the meter well, the $15 wire fee. Is this a new one?
That's a new one for.
And the first one, I think you might have said backwards, but the first one was also to revenue from Lake of the Woods, right?
Yes, yes, it was from Lake of the Woods to revenue.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Or I heard it backwards, one of the two.
Yes.
Okay, so great. Any questions for our treasurer? Besides mine. Okay, our J P I A representative is not here this evening, so we'll skip that unless there's anything that anybody needs to report on. No, okay, so on to item five, board member initiatives. Are there any board member initiatives? Hearing none, we're on item six, manager's report. Start with our general manager.
We've had a slow month. Relates, we've got some, but we've installed all the meters that we had purchased, which is good. And Corey even brought up, he wouldn't be opposed to installing the ones that Bruff needed to install. As long as they install the two, two-inch meters, they're going to be more difficult. So I'm debating on whether or not I'm going to do that. I would assume that that's less, it costs the project less money if we have Bruff do it. But if we don't have much for the guys to do, it wouldn't be bad either. I, I tossed around the idea of also recommending that we change all of our emails from the Gmail to a dot com email. The reason being is all this hacking and scary, I mean, I got, you know, Brahma, Brahma had one money and then he got an email that implied I wanted to borrow the exact amount he won, and we hadn't even talked. I get emails from Becca all the time. I got one from Jerry that's not from, I mean, Tiffany gets them from me. And I think Gmail would probably be the easiest to hack, so Tiffany's going to check and see if, through our web domain, if we get the emails dot com. And if not, we should create one. I think that we need to try to be a little more secure in our stuff.
Yeah, let me, let me read the one that I got, got today. From Director Schonberg, Treasurer Terry has to pay a vendor but has no experience with L, Venmo, or PayPal. Could you assist with the payment processing using one of these platforms? I guarantee a prompt reimbursement and will provide you with all necessary information.
So, you know, they're, they're trying, and luckily for us, we've all known each other for a number of years and we know how we talk. I don't know if it. And nobody's going to do that, so we know that, but like my computer glitches all the time. I got to get Bill in here to try to check it, and I don't know if it's because somebody has hacked it or not, and you, we, you would never know if somebody had been able to get into the computers. Luckily, they're not all linked through a server.
What, what's interesting is this one says from Lisa Schonberg, but it says, it's actually from the D E A C two, twenty-three-ten at virginmedia.com.
And they're always, that's how I can tell a bunch of scams is by the email address. So anyway, when we get more information about costs, I think we should all do that, change all of our emails to something more secure.
I was just going to add that the, the nice thing about doing something like that is you can make general addresses that say like president, you know, so that when people go away and we have a new board member, you can actually switch it if it's really all Fraser Park stuff, which it should be.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah, I mean, that's another thing about that, that you can, I know you can do that where the next person, if they needed that old information, could carry on with the old information.
But, but do you have to, oh, we'd have to go into the bank though, or we'd have to change it in the bank?
Yeah, if we do find them, we'd have to change it with anybody.
Yeah, you have to send out mass emails to everybody you've contacted and emailed with and. And you can keep the Gmails active for a number of, for, you know, however long, because you have to be able to go back in and find old emails, but. So it's a big undertaking, but I'm surprised we haven't done it already. The other thing I'm going to do is when it's, since it's cold weather, is this drawer obviously broke. Turned out somebody duct taped it however long before, so it was burnt. I'm going to rip this whole cabinet out. And when things are slow and cold, have the guys start painting the, the boardroom. I'm touching up the paint and we'll decide about flooring later on, but I would like to paint in here, and you suggested new blinds, but I'm going to suggest curtains for the windows, because curtains keep out cold and keep in the heat way better than a blind does. And, you know, you can find them cheap on Amazon or DG or whatever, but, so that's my, my longer term goal game plan is to get rid of it, because this is just a catch-all for everything, really. It's got very little benefit to it.
You don't use it for any kind of storage?
Yeah, some storage, but most of it doesn't have to be stored. It doesn't need to be there, you know, like a, like a laminator, it could be put somewhere else. We could put shelves up there right here for, you know, some stuff, but for the most part, we don't need it. And this is, this is every time somebody wants to walk through here, I have to slide my chair all the way forward and turn it sideways, so people, it just would be better without it.
Or you can put like some shelving under the monitor back behind, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we could find space where we need it, but we're obviously not going to spend money fixing a cabinet that doesn't serve a whole lot of purpose, so. I'm just going to get rid of it.
Okay.
And that's it.
I have no problem with that. Well, I don't have to eat here with a camera.
Yeah. Okay, and how about the Minister of, are there any questions for our general manager? Okay, how about the Minister of Systems Report?
Um, nothing out of ordinary now. I think we're going to talk to J P I A, Aqua J P I A. I had heard from somebody at the conference that they do some cybersecurity help also. So I'm going to talk to them and see what they offer. We already, you know, pay them. That might be good.
Oh, I do have one more thing to report on. I told Cal Real Water a month or two ago, and I told them to get the date when the guy came, that if they don't up their trainings, in-person training schedules for classes closer to us, that we're going to cancel our membership with them. Because that's all, we pay them every year, and that's the only thing we use them for, is for training. And we haven't been able to get any training for CDU's anywhere near us, most of it's up in Northern California. So supposedly, they're coming out with a brand-new schedule that's going to have more of that, so I'll keep you posted on that as well.
And how much does that cost us a year ago?
I don't know.
Probably five grand or something, yeah.
Even if it was a hundred bucks, you're not going to keep spending it if you can't use it.
No, I.
Okay.
Hey, speaking about, speaking about trainings, Johnny, have you ever gone to, to that Cal Water Expo training that they have in, in Tahoe every year?
No, I have not. I, I wanted to go, but I haven't gone because just the, the cost.
I was going to say.
I think one year, I think last year, you were looking at a, a scholarship or something, but it, it never, you know, it didn't happen in time. But if you can give, give me a scholarship and show, well, I'd love to go.
I'll, I'll look, I'll look into it, because one year, one year R C A C had scholarships, and that one's a really worthwhile event. I've been to it a few times and it's, it's really good. You make, you got really good connections with, with different vendors and, and stuff like that. It's a, it's a really cool event, so we'll see if we can make, make something work.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to item seven, and I just want to remind her, our vice president, the parliamentarian, if you see us stepping on each other or doing anything, just make sure that you let us know and reel us in.
Thank you. I will, I'll do my best.
Thank you. Okay, item seven, standing committee reports, the accounts payable committee.
We met, we went through invoices and asked Deborah to cut the checks, and we can go through those all later.
And I'll just report that I apologize to the water company, because I did not turn in our credit card payment on time. And so it cost us
a couple.
A late payment and some interest, which was not, not a good thing. So anyways, it won't happen again. I apologize. Somehow it got lost in my, my glove compartment. Are you human?
Thank you for your honesty and.
But it is done.
Your apology. Okay, State Update Meeting Committee.
Do that next week.
Yeah, that's next week.
Quarterly Financial Committee.
We have not met. Next month, I'm ready.
Okay, so that's item seven. Any comments on seven before I move on to eight? Okay, item eight, ad hoc committee reports, project committee.
We didn't, we haven't met.
Financial Committee.
We have not met.
Standby Fee Committee.
We have a meeting planned for eleven o'clock on Monday, the sixteenth, at eleven o'clock. So we'll be, we'll have something to talk about following meeting, please.
All right. Any questions for anyone on our ad hocks? All right, moving on to item nine, discussion vote on accounts payable and financial information. This is Deborah.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, so we prepared one check out of the meter well account in the amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars payable to Bruff Construction, progress payment number seven. And then we prepared twenty-six checks out of the revenue operating account for a total of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars, sixty-one cents. The extraordinary disbursements include a J P I A disbursement for employee benefits, nine thousand, seven dollars, forty-seven cents. The primary visa was three thousand, ninety-six dollars, one cent. Hatch, three thousand, twenty-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. Edison, six thousand, five hundred, sixty-three dollars, twenty-seven cents. And Young Woolridge, three thousand, seven hundred, sixty-one dollars, five cents. That's all I have.
Questions for Deborah on, or comments on anything? If not, I will entertain a motion.
One question?
Yes.
Who's Hatch?
I think it's Hawk.
Hawk, wrong, yeah, Hawk. Should be H.
It's Hawk.
H.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they supply our photrometers for testing chlorine. They provide the, the reagents that we need to use in that and detectors and stuff like that.
So we bought new.
I thought.
The last time I bought stuff, I believe it was a, a reagent.
No, it was.
We used to buy it through USA Blue Book.
Can you pull out that?
We used to buy some of that stuff from USA Blue Book, because before you couldn't purchase directly from Hawk. So when I had a chance to, when they reached out to me, I purchased from them, because it was like eighty dollars cheaper than.
Yeah, this I think.
This, this is.
Nitrate?
Nitrate.
Field Service two V Nitrotech sensor, nineteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's.
Nitrate sensor.
Our nitrate analyzer.
No, we, we don't do work on them. Let me see that. We, we have a, oh, yeah, that's the, that's the, um, the service agreement that we got with Hawk.
Yes.
There was also one that I bought directly from Hawk, but that's what that is. That's their annual fee for.
Oh, it's an annual.
Coming out, and Jesse, you can do it yourself, but Jesse Gollywall.
Right, right.
He made us do it, wanted it to be serviced by the experts. So, yeah, you're right.
Good catch, Jerry. Okay, okay, no problem. I just.
So that'll be.
That was the one I wanted to add, so. Good catch, Mr. Jesse.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we pay our bills, but then that will.
Okay, are there any comments, discussion? Oral call directors, Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director Schonberg is an aye, that is four, zero, zero, one absence, and we are paying our bills. Any other questions or anything for Deborah before she goes?
No, another, great job.
Hey, thank you, Deborah. Have.
Thank you.
I'll see you on Tuesday.
See you next week.
Yeah. Impressed schedule again.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, we're going to go to our closed session. Oral announcement prior to closed session, government code five, four, nine, five, seven point seven A, representative of the legislative body to orally announce the items to be discussed in closed session prior to any closed session meeting. Ten, item ten, closed session pursuant to government code five, four, nine, five, seven. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, government code five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D one. On Fraser Park Public Utility District versus C N C Elite Properties LLC and all, current county superior court, case number B C B dash twenty-four dash one zero zero, one nine nine. Item eleven, closed session pursuant to government code five, four, nine, five, seven, conference with real property negotiators, government code five, four, nine, five, six point eight, property in question, two, five, parcel two, five, six dash zero, seven, zero, dash five, four, parcel two, five, six, dash zero, seven, zero, dash five, five, and two, five, six, dash five, two, zero, dash thirteen. Agency negotiators are Lisa Schonberg and Brahma Nyman, and Dee Jasper. Negotiating parties are Jeff French and Emily Wainwright, under negotiation, early price and terms of payment for those properties mentioned earlier. So at this time, we're going to go into the closed session at four twenty.
How you feeling otherwise?
Director, Director Kelly? You might want to take a look at the.
She did before.
USDA payment fund.
I did it today.
Because I thought we had money going in every, every month. You had like thirteen thousand something, and I don't see. You had like thirteen thousand something, and I don't see.
Sure. We're back in. Okay, welcome back everyone, I'm gonna make the oral announcement following closed session. Government code five, four, nine, five, seven point one A. The legislative body of any local agency should publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention on that action of every member present thereon. We are currently at four thirty-nine coming out of closed session. That was an informational session only, there was no action actually taken during the session. And we are back in the regular session, open session. Okay, item twelve, discussion vote update on Frasier Park Lake of the Wood consolidation planning project. Twelve A, discussion vote review of the project timeline and budget. Any new things to add there that Ruben has discussed, or is that all waiting till next week?
That'll be next week, that'll be next week Lisa.
Okay, so we should have a better idea now that we have a judgment from the court. So I guess we'll be talking to Ruben next week at the state of meeting. Okay, twelve B, discussion vote on the acquisition and development of well eight.
You could just tell them that we, we won in court.
Yeah officially, oh go ahead Lisa, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say what you're gonna say, and that is, we prevailed in court on the twenty-second November, and so we have a judgment in our favor to take possession of the property. The formal judgment came down, I think during the last week of November, and thirty, the, there is a thirty day waiting period from the time that that judgment is issued till the time that we can actually take possession. So I'm guessing that probably sometime around the first of the year, we will be able to take possession of the property if we want to. That is, I mean occupy it and start staking some things out. I don't think there's any need for that right now, but we do have the authority to do that.
Great, thank you, do we have a question from Joe Manger?
Allison. And do you, unless you got further update, that was thirty days after they were served the notice, right?
That's right. But. Thirty days after the judgment was issued. They, and then in that thirty day period, we have to give them, send them a notice by registered mail. That's my understanding Johnny, I talked to him with Alan, and I think I understand it correctly. But, but I'll ask him again.
But the rough thirty days, it could be a few days more either. Well, yeah, that's fine, that's cool.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments on item twelve B?
I have a question, I was a little confused, this is Joan. You got the judgment for the possession of the property, I'm confused. Do you still need to negotiate the dollar amount, or is the court going to tell you what the dollar amount for the amount of purchase is supposed to be?
There'll be a hearing on that Joan, and it has not been scheduled yet, but there'll be a hearing on it, and the only information that the court has right now, that is, has been submitted is our appraisal. So I think that if, during the hearing, I think the defendants are going to argue that it's worth more than what the appraisal indicated it was worth, but they don't have any appraisal that supports their argument. My guess is the judge is going to go ahead and use the appraisal, the only one that exists, and that's the one for about, I think it's just under nine thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, moving on to twelve C, discussion vote on the acquisition development of well nine, an additional booster in tank side properties, derivative compliance law line adjustment and property appraisals. We discussed a lot of that in closed session, anything you can discuss further in open session, Dee?
Just to know, just the public, let them know that we're moving ahead with well nine, where we have a very cooperative relationship with the landowners, and so we should be able to bring that. We've agreed on the pricing, and now it's just a question of going through the mapping and taking care of the county requirements.
Hey, any other questions or comments on that? Okay, hearing none, now we'll go on to twelve D, discussion vote on project municipal service review, MSR, which of course is done, and so this is really about Lafco, which is also part of this item D. And where we're at, I did mention earlier that I signed the common sense exemption letter. Do you have anything to add to that Dee?
Yeah, you know, nothing ever seems to be as simple as you think it is. And when I had some discussions with Lafco over the last couple of days, we've been going back and forth a little bit, and I mentioned to Benton Rice, Bud Rice, he's the assistant executive director of Lafco, and he told me that we would need to do all the SEQA, submit all the SEQA studies for the project because our SOI is tied to a project. And so I objected to that and told him that, you know, we had, we had already done our MSR. We've, you know, dotted the i's and crossed the t's, we've written our reports, we have mapped it. Lafco has had the map for over a year, and that we wanted to go ahead with our notice of exemption without having to submit any further SEQA documents until we were ready to do that, which would be about a year, because that's what Tom Dodson had told us it would take. And that, you know, we needed to go ahead and clear the SOI, get it out of the way before we went back through the annexation process and updated our MSR for that, and, you know, add some more accurate costs once we have our design done. And he agreed to that, so that was good, and agreed to that today. I got a communication from him, and he said, go ahead and submit it. One thing he wants us to do is be, as we did with the pipeline replacement project and a couple of other of these exemptions, is that we would be the lead agency for that, and then we would file it with the county and with the state, and then that would be a thirty-five day, I think, period that, that has to expire before it is formalized. So a little bit of a hiccup, and the letter will be submitted with the very, with the last paragraph deleted from that Lisa, and I'll send it back. And that's the one that required Lafco to be the lead agency. And Lafco told me that there was no way they were gonna be the agency for this.
But isn't there an issue with us being the lead agency? That that means that we have to go through the, this came up in our discussions, and there was some, and right now it's escaping me, but there was some huge issue with us being the lead agency that it had to do with the annexation having to move forward in a different manner.
Yeah, apparently there's no issue with Lafco regarding that. And, you know, they, they know full well, I went through the, kind of the entire history of, you know, where we are, what we have done, what we're doing now, and reminded Bud that, you know, of where we've been, and of course they deal with a lot of different projects. And of course, they deal with a lot of different projects. And so once, once he was aware of what we have been doing and what we are doing and where we're going, and that we have hired Tom Dodson to do the environmental work. And he was fine with, with that. So there should be no problem there at all.
Okay, I'll try to refresh my memory on that whole discussion though, because I remember a rather lengthy discussion, I believe, with Ruben about, and I thought with Carlos about, and I thought with actually, who else was part of that discussion? That was, the discussion was with the environmental, that there was a whole issue with us being the lead agency and what would go on with that.
Well, we can have that discussion on next Thursday, Lisa, and that's not my, not my understanding where we're at.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I would just say that in the discussion, I remember you being concerned about us not being the lead agency. And they were saying that we, that they had to be the lead agency, or, and then, and now Dee has talked to them, and now he's saying that we can be the lead agency, but we can discuss it more.
Yeah, I thought, I have my brain the opposite way, so, but I'm just like, it could be.
Actually, Tom Dodson did say something about Fraser Park being the lead agency. I don't remember exactly what it is, but Lisa is correct a little bit on that, that Tom did say that if Fraser Park was the lead agency, then something, but I can't remember exactly what it is. We'd have to go through the notes.
Yes, Dr. Naiman.
Um, well, it was in regard to the, the asking for the exemption, the certificate, the certificate of exemption, that they were saying that, I think he was saying at that time that, that when we, if we did that, that Lafco was going to
Demand that they be the lead agency?
Demand that they be the lead agency. That's what I remember, but, you know. Maybe you can give a call to Tom Dodson before then, Dee, and talk to him, just.
Yes, in fact, I have a communication into him, so we will talk it over. There, really, nobody wants to be the lead agency. You know, it's, because, you know, it is, it is more responsibility, more work. But commonly, the district that proposes the project is the lead agency for the project. And normally, that's how it goes. But I'll, I'll talk with Tom a little bit. He's in, he's not in the office today. He'll be in tomorrow. And we'll, we'll chat about that, and then we'll have him on. I'll ask him if he can be available for the state meeting as well.
Thursday, yeah.
That would be great. Thank you. Okay, anything else on 12D?
That's all I have.
12E continues to be tabled. That's our MOU. That's gonna happen later, at a later date. 12F is Lake of the Woods. So you folks are on. That's the discussion vote on Lake of the Woods projects and consolidation. Pam and Joan and Mary.
Hey, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Hi, guys. So nothing new to report on either grant or even well number four. We haven't gotten our samples back for December. And the blending station had some blimp in November on the 21st. Our nitrate at the blending station went up to 6.2, but all other samples were below 3.1. So we're not sure what happened there, and I still haven't gotten December's numbers for all the other wells. So I'll keep you posted hopefully by next week. Um, overall, I, I'm not sure if I shared with you guys that the wells have gone down from October. So in November, when we redid them, they have gone down 1 to 4.5 feet. From last year, they're up 23 to 55 feet, and since January, they're still up 11 to 24 and a half feet. That's all I have to report. Do you guys have any questions?
No, sounds good.
Okay, and I'm still waiting for Jesse. He just got back to give us an update on whether or not we can convert monitoring from weekly to monthly.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, thank you. And then points of payments, we don't have anything on that yet. That's gonna happen next, yes, Dr. Naiman.
Um, that should happen next, next week. And we need to make sure that we have, Dee, we need to make sure any, any invoices that we still have budget on that we, we can put in. We need to have the claims submitted because our, to submit claims ends at the end of this month. And so we're gonna be in a holding pattern as far as being able to pay anything until, until they approve the increase and the extension on the contract. So, so if there's any, so if there's any invoices that need to get in for, for Tom Dodson or, or anything, we need to have it on next, next week's claim with Carlos and Oscar, well, with Carlos.
Okay, I'll pass that along to Tom as well, make sure he knows.
And I'll, I'll have that, that claim to you guys by, by Wednesday. And I'll have the signature pages to Tiffany by Thursday, because I'll be out Thursday, so I won't be on that meeting.
You won't be on the meeting?
No, I'll be off that day.
Oh, okay.
It'll be a quiet meeting.
Hey, any other comments, discussion?
Yeah, and another thing, I'll, I'll be having to leave, get off this meeting in a few minutes because I have to get on another meeting that I have to get on to, so. But there's nothing repressing in any of the other stuff that I know of. If, if there is, I can get back to you guys if you need anything.
Will you have a call on Monday, Carlos?
Uh, yeah, I'll be on that call.
Okay.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
So no changes on the pipeline?
Well, do we need to move forward to pipeline right now, or?
I think we should just, yeah, and, and then we can do Oscar after.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, we go to
Item 14.
Item, item 14 and item 15 and 16.
Okay, um, for a second.
I second.
Okay, discussion. We'll call directors, Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Naiman.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director Shobers and I, Director Gibson is missing, is, uh, missing, absent, not missing. And that motion passes 400 with one absent. So we're on 14. Anything new with engineering or design?
Nothing new. Nothing new.
14B, discussion vote on the project application. Any other issues, any problems, Carlos? Anything with the project application?
Uh, no, nothing.
It's still in review?
Yeah, um, I am gonna share something with you guys real quick. It's not, it's not something that's, uh, that's guaranteed or that's been guaranteed. But speaking with Ruben, uh, a while back, he, he said that there could be a possibility where this pipeline replacement project could be funded, funded with the 2024 funding. So hopefully, that is possible, because if that is possible, then we'll get a funding agreement a lot sooner. Uh, because he was saying that this could be a project that, that could be funded with the 2024 funds, so hopefully that's so. And I'll be asking him, well, actually, I won't be asking him, but I'll, I'll send him an email scene and see what he says, because it wasn't like something that was, that he said is guaranteed, but he was gonna look into it. So once I find out more info, I'll give it to you guys.
Beautiful.
Thank you, Carlos. And, and do we know if, so the state, Ryan, and I think he had looked at it, but Jesse's still looking at the, uh,
Hasn't given approval on the design?
He hasn't that I know of, but, um, and that's, that's like the, the nature of the beast with, with Jesse and them. They, they do take a while to review those plans and specs. I had another project where, you know, it took three months for them to review them. So you guys, you guys just gotta keep pressing, Dee, you gotta keep sending messages and asking them about the review and stuff.
Okay, I have a question, from Director Naiman.
Um, if I remember correctly from our last meeting, Ryan Eisenhower said that he had reviewed it and that it was with Jesse, and that he was gonna approve it. And, and he was just waiting on Jesse to do the letter. So maybe we need to send a, a email, Dee, as a reminder, to, to Jesse and Ryan, asking about that before our meeting next week.
Yeah, I'll do that. Well, it's the end of the year.
Yeah, he's going on vacation.
Okay, any other questions on 14 Pipeline Replacement Project? Okay, we're gonna move on to 15, discussion vote on rate study. Carlos?
Um, I still need to submit the, the work plan with the requesting to put out a new task for rate study and the, and the Prop 218 process. So that'll be, that, that work plan should be submitted by the end of this month. So then it'll take a, a month or two or so to, to get approved. So you, you guys are on schedule, because you guys aren't gonna wanna do it till next year, till 2026, right?
Well, we'd like to have, we'd have, like to have the meetings done before, so that we could increase the rates by January of '26.
Yeah, it'll, that, that should be, that should be plenty of time. That's, it needs to be done before a year, so that's plenty of time.
Okay, any other discussion comments on item 15 Rate Study? Otherwise, I'll do item 16, the standby fee assessment, which we talked about. There's a meeting on Monday. Anything else to add to that, Carlos?
Uh, not for me.
Anything else with the ad hoc to add? You haven't met yet. This will be your first meeting?
It'll be my first meeting.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Carlos. Okay, thank you so much, Carlos. I think we're done. And we will go back to item 13. You have a good weekend. We will see you next week.
Have a, have a, have a good, have a good Christmas, Carlos.
Uh, you guys too. Happy holidays to you guys as well.
Good one.
You in January.
Okay, item 13, discussion vote update on FPPUD meter replacement project emergency well. Supply projects, where are we at on 13A, the well? General Manager Allison?
On the fencing, I know that we got a USA request for us to market now utilities. It's the fencing company is planning on coming out. I don't know when, but they're obviously gonna do it fairly soon, or they wouldn't have called in the USA already. So.
When the well is already capped and?
Oh, the well's capped and everything. So now it's just putting the fence back up and then getting with them on the, the equipment that we're gonna buy, the meter and air conditioning unit, what have you.
Okay, any other questions, comments on that? Okay, 13B is the meters.
Uh, for all practical purposes, we're done with that, except for where Bruff still has, I think it's something like roughly 15 meters to install. They're now here. One of the two-inch meters came in a week or two ago, and the other one came in today. So that means that I can let them know now, or let Curtis know to let Bruff know that they can come in and install them.
Okay, and and then there was what you had brought up in the manager's report, is that?
Well, I'm just tossing around the idea of whether or not to keep our guys busy by helping install some of those three-quarter inch meters. The one-inch meters, rather than Bruff have to do them all. Um, but I haven't decided as of yet. I'll talk to Curtis about that when, uh, we discuss it now.
And we need to let Oscar know as well, right, to see if the price, go ahead.
Will we realize any money off of that benefit off of having our guys do it, or?
I believe the benefit would be, I think they've been invoicing us as work was completed, so there would be less of a final invoice.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
That's a win-win.
Yeah, and there's one of them that's gonna be really a pain in the neck that they're gonna have to contend with. I've been putting off for a long time, so I want them to focus on that.
Bruff or the guys?
Bruff.
Bruff, why, when I say Bruff, I mean their company as a whole and their crew coming in. But there's a difficult meter to replace at the trailer park, and I would rather have Bruff's guys come in and do it.
Absolutely. I like your decision.
Thank you.
And from my understanding, from what Ruben said, that money is covered, if it does cost us. But I know that that was, you know, something that had been brought up because we were already, well, actually, I think it was just on the well that we were over, right? The meters, we had enough money.
We had enough money, because we never finished the well.
Right. Well, I know, but it was this whole line item issue that was a problem, so, um, but I think that's resolved.
It is absolutely not a problem to have Bruff do it, and that would cost more money. So I'm sure there's not a problem if we do some of the meters and it costs less money. Because they're, they've been waiting for the meters to get here.
Or like you said, if there's some way of, well, I don't think we can on the project. We can't do the two inches for the business meters.
No, they're doing two, it's two inches. They're doing the two inch at school, and they're doing the two inch at the trailer park. The other ones, they will not do.
Was there another question, Director Naiman?
Um, just, since, since they have finished, when, when does United plan on billing us, so we can get that into a claim? Because Oscar would be submitting a claim next week. Otherwise, we wouldn't be submitting a claim until the, the following month, until January.
Dee may have an update, but I haven't heard anything from, from them. And the work has been going slowly and, you know, getting the fence up and the well abandonment. So if they miss out on this open window timeframe for payment, that won't be our fault.
Right.
Okay.
I know Curtis has been in touch with them, uh, but I, I don't know what, you know, about the billing or when they may want to get that, and I'll mention it to Curtis.
Okay, anything else on 13B? Hey, 13C, claims and payouts, I don't believe we have anything until next week, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Okay. Um, just touch base, um, uh, I still need to connect with Curtis regarding that, um, chart he was gonna get me with the actualized cost for, for what we need to transfer over um, for the construction budget from contingency. So I'll be connecting with him tomorrow, probably. And see if I could get ahold of him. If not, I'll, I'll try early in the week. That way I can get everything situated before the, the call with the state and the board meeting for next week. I know you guys approved it contingently, but you guys still wanna review the, that letter or that document.
You know, Oscar, you might wanna call him right now. He's usually in the office till 6:00. I believe he will be gone tomorrow.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll give him a call then.
Yeah, yeah, he'll, he should, I didn't, I'm not sure that he's left. My door's closed. Anyhow, yeah, give it, give it a go.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
Anything else on C? Okay, moving on to D, discussion vote obtained on bridge loan requests and payments.
Okay, um.
Director Naiman?
The only question I have, I know that we received the 18,000 that's going out for Bruff. I don't know. I don't know how much money we still have outstanding. Uh, have we paid back the other? We have not, we haven't. So we haven't received six and seven things.
The state now.
Okay, so so we're we're, that's two hundred and thirty two thousand.
Somewhere.
So so do we, we have money left still, right, Oscar?
Uh, we could. Well, I believe it's over two hundred thousand. So.
Okay, then that's fine. The only reason I was bringing that up is so like when when United comes, then we can request a pa- a payment so so we can pay them and and then put it on the claim, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this item thirteen? If not, we will move on. Okay, thank you, Oscar. I think we're done. With all of your items.
I'll speak to you guys next week. Um, I'm gonna try to get a hold of Curtis right now and and um, um, if I have any updates for you, I'll reach out.
All right, thank you.
Dee, I think we're also done with your item. So thank you both and I have a good uh, holiday or no, we're gonna see.
See you next week, Dee.
Next week.
Hey, well, that sounds good. Have a good evening and we'll talk um, probably before then, but anyway, uh, certainly on Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good night. Okay, well, now on item seventeen, continued discussion vote on district's record retention policy. Do we want to do another page of that? Or do we want to put that off until next meeting, which is only next week? Or the following meeting in February?
We could be putting it off for indefinite as long as we keep putting it off on here.
Well, we did it last time. We're on page eleven of eighteen.
Yes.
Step to the board. I am just the.
Well, Bron is not here right now to voice your opinion, so.
Do we want to take a brief recess? Well, Bron is taking a brief recess.
I guess so.
Yep.
Okay, five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, is there, oh, here it comes. Never mind.
Okay.
He's back.
Sorry. Do you want to do a page of the record retention policy, Bron, or?
Sure.
Yeah. Why not?
Why did I just do this?
Why did we leave it up to you with what I wrote out?
Okay, so we're on page eleven of eighteen. Uh, fees receipts. Right now it has them being retained for ten years. And it has uh.
What page are we in?
On page eleven.
Eleven of eighteen.
Okay, so uh I gotta look this up again. I forgot what this is. Um. Okay, so right now it's advisable, but we've been changing all of those to a yes, we keep it. And right now ten years for fees and receipts. Anyone have an issue with changing the A to a Y and moving on, keeping the ten?
Nope.
Okay, fidelity bonds. What are fidelity bonds? I have no clue.
We don't have. Life plus four.
We don't have any.
Okay, well, we don't know what it is, but life plus four is probably fine as long as we do a yes instead of the A. So is everyone okay with that? Okay, moving on. Final engineering drawings and ASBILs, that's a permanent. We keep that forever and a yes.
Probably click all the way down to general ledger, permanent, because all of those would be.
Permanent.
Okay, so so well, so final engineering is going to be a yes. That's a permanent yes. Final engineering, permanent yes. Uh, final engineering master plans is um, we keep the original no matter what. And so that's and that's a permanent uh, final engineering reports and studies that's a uh so we don't want to keep them. Well, I guess we don't need the really old maps if they redo maps. So we don't want OCD on that, right? Just the master plans.
Yeah.
Uh, but don't we want OCD on the ASBILs?
Uh, if we had ASBILs to worry about, I I would say, yeah. Yeah.
Do we change that from Y to OCD?
Yep.
Original cannot be destroyed.
Yeah, we can never destroy originals like that.
Wow.
Okay, so which on these engineering things do we not want to destroy? Engineering drawings and ASBILs probably shouldn't be destroyed just so we can go back in case there's a mistake. Engineering maps, we do redo, right? So eventually.
Um, not necessarily. I mean, anything that's invalid.
Because we want.
During math, they keep telling us how forever.
Okay, so we should do OCD on that?
Yeah.
Okay, final engineering reports and studies, OCD?
Yeah, sure. So are you saying we're all OCD?
Formation, change of organization or reorganization of the district that's already permanent OCD. General ledger we're on. So that's a permanent and yes. I don't think we need OCD necessarily. Do we need the original ledgers? No, but as long as we have a backup of everything.
No. I I I'm not going to get rid of the other ledgers that we have anyway. I would have to physically cut the hard binding on them just to build.
Then let's just put OCD.
But they also will be backed up for media storage anytime soon.
Then it definitely needs to be OCD.
Something.
Okay, hardware, software documentation. Uh, probably, uh, this is AT plus two, active time plus two years.
Makes sense.
And then a yes on backing it up. We have a blank.
Do you even know what software documentation is?
Huh?
Do you even know what software documentation is?
I know what software documentation is, but I don't know if we kind of know where.
I've never seen anything. I mean, that might be like when we purchased a.
Hardware would be like this. Yeah, software, when we purchase software, it's like the specs if we we may or may not need them, but we certainly need documentation saved on like the the uh, um.
RVS?
Are you? Yeah, that and the uh brain is not working tonight. The uh other computer in there that that does our whole.
RV RVS.
Skater.
The skater, thank you. So so do we want to just put AT plus two and yes?
Yes.
Okay, individual water rights, that's permanent OCD, so that's fine. Inspection reports moves space.
I know what that is.
I don't know what that means.
I would do, I would just add yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Inventory records, I just add yes.
Everyone's good with that?
Mm hmm. Same thing with well, inventory reports, they always so. All right.
That's life plus seven.
Yeah, now that we have one.
And a yes. Um. Okay. Uh. Okay, invoices, life plus seven, and we're going to change that to a yes.
Mm hmm.
Job postings, life plus three. I don't know why we need that so long, but I guess that's only a yes. That's the life of the job. So as long as the job exists.
No, no, it's the life of the job posting. Wouldn't be the life.
Yes, no, that's.
If we run an ad in the paper, we have to keep that for life plus three.
Life of, as long as that job exists in that.
What does life plus three mean?
So the the length of the posting, the length of whatever it is that we did plus three years.
So like the invoices, we like we bought uh from um.
And was on toilet paper? We have to keep it.
Like when you go to the big house, you get life.
The 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 life of what that lasted for plus seven years.
So like expendable supplies would be quickly is on to backed up online.
Right.
They would.
Right, okay.
But the the job postings is, I disagree. It doesn't matter, but I disagree. It's not the life of the job. It's the life of the posting, which is why they say posting. It's only that the ad that you run the life of the ad plus.
Three years.
Yeah, but that's all backed up for us at Mountain Enterprise on their archives.
And we would be backing it up.
I guess. I I have never once printed it out. It's on my email when I send it and say, here's that ad I want.
And do your emails get backed up to carbon carbonate?
I never delete anything. So, yeah, so we're good.
Okay, job recruitment packets, life plus three and add a yes.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
We don't recruit people, yeah.
Ledgers, seven years and a yes, but we're saying that we don't destroy the ledgers.
Right.
So you want to just put permanent and a
or?
And a OCD? Legal opinions, ten years and a yes.
Sure.
Legislation, life.
We don't do any of that. So if we did life, yeah.
And a yes. Licenses and permits to operate, permanent and a yes. And loans and grants, life plus ten years and a yes.
Yeah. All righty.
Did it? It is. Good for you, Ron.
I would say, other than the bond book, though, isn't the loan and grants, isn't the bond book part of the loan and grants? I would say we need to keep that longer. Well, no, life would be the whole time we have the loan, so it'd be fine. Okay, so we're good. Okay, thank you. Let through another page, okay? Um. So we are on. Uh, Zaywin want to take a brief recess?
Nope.
Okay, moving on, uh, item eighteen, discussion vote on rotating board positions for resolution FP two zero one nine zero two one four dash oh one. This is our normal rotation that happens yearly.
I don't see it in here.
And I don't see the resolution in here.
Not the resolution, no.
Um, so but we don't really need to read it because nothing really changes on it, other than the names of the positions and who is responsible for.
That just says that how you rotate according to the numbers. And that you rotate once a year, but can keep your position for an additional if.
Right, so but we need to actually do the rotation right now. So generally, the way it works is it starts by the board, the the seat number one, who's seat number one? Jerry. So Jerry, you've been in this your position for less, for just one year, right? And are we um and are you interested in staying in the current position of uh Vice President? Or are you?
I'm fine unless everyone's moving, then we can all roll on whatever, whatever the board votes to do. I'm okay with.
Anyone have any issues with or recommendations or?
I I think that we should just keep the positions for one more year and then we can switch it next year. I mean, that would be, you know.
How do you feel, Terry?
I think that that would be a bit more beneficial.
Yeah, we're just getting started on some of our stuff that we're doing right now.
Right. You guys are okay with me running the meeting? I'm not messing up too much?
No, no, I think everyone's, everyone's level is coming to a a good place. And if you're going to make me parliamentarian, then I will try to control the meeting as best I can.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, let's stay, let's just stay.
Okay, so then we are going to, I think we should do that as a motion. Do we need a motion? I do think we need a motion, so.
I move that we um uh, maintain the current seats and offices that we have uh, for one more year and uh postpone the rotation uh for twelve months until um December of twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Any discussion issues before we take a vote? Hi, Director Garcia.
Hi.
Director Nyman.
Hi.
Director Kelling.
Hi.
Director Schomberg is an I. Uh, that motion passes four zero zero and Director Gibson is absent. Okay, um. Item nineteen is a little more complicated. Discussion vote on reforming or dissolving current ad hoc committees.
Do you want to wait till you have five because the voting can get weird?
It'd probably be a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Someone want to table that?
Yes. I make a motion that we uh table uh.
Do we want to table it to the next regular meeting or to the?
Nineteen. Next regular meeting. To our next, next regular meeting.
To January.
In January.
That's right, yeah.
They're second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion before we call? Okay, Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director Schomberg is an I. That motion passes four zero zero one absent, Director Gibson, and that um, means that we will table nineteen until our next regular meeting. Uh, item twenty, discussion vote on board member position descriptions.
What is that?
Yeah, I didn't put it in there. So we can either do it next meeting or January.
Yeah, let's table.
I would table it to the same time we're doing that.
Uh, I make a motion that we table uh discussion vote on board member position descriptions until our regular meeting in January. I'll second that. In twenty twenty five.
Okay, I I just have one question. Now we have a motion and a second, uh, just as far as discussion. What does that entail exactly? You're, we're going to do a description of like what the president does.
We're changing Vice President to Parliament. You know what I'm saying?
Parliament.
Parliamentarian. So we have a document that exists that describes what each board position does. So we were going to add.
Oh, we're eliminating, well, I have point of information.
Yeah.
Does that mean I, when we're eliminating the Vice President position?
No.
No, that's just slash.
It, we're just adding.
Okay, okay.
A a job description.
The normal Robert's rules, that is the parliamentarian position, to my knowledge. I could be wrong, but to my knowledge, I believe in it.
Refresh it.
However, that just means that we, because we don't have that written out in our um descriptions, which we have to have, it just uh, articulates what that position does.
Okay, cool. And you were going to provide download?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to give it.
Um, Director Nyman.
I, so so we're going to go over each one, each position and and see what's in, what's in, what's the description for each one, and so we can add or delete or.
I would imagine that initially you guys could just review it, right? I mean, I'm sure it's going to be pretty stock for the board position.
And what you're doing now.
Rules of order. You know, you could be assigned your homework, and if you think there's something else, you could always bring it back. That'll shorten things a lot. If you just read your own description and say, oh, I think you should have this, and then we could discuss it. Yeah.
Yeah, put a meeting between them and, yeah.
Cool.
So you'll send.
Well, then maybe it would be nice to have that at the next meeting just for us to look at the descriptions, and then we could vote and discuss it at the first meeting in January. Because I never seem to have enough time to look at stuff.
In other words, just print them out for us that we have them and then we could take them home with us.
Okay.
And have a little more time to mull.
Digest it.
Yes, digest.
No, it's very long. No, it's not very long at all.
Okay, so that's item twenty. Did we vote on it? No. Uh, we'll call Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Nyman. Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director Schomberg is an I. That motion passes four zero zero one absent, Director Gibson, and that is tabled. Okay, um, actually, you know what? I was out of order. Because when something's tabled, you can't discuss it. It shouldn't just been tabled. My apologies.
I learned from you.
Parliamentarian. Okay. Point of order.
Oh.
I missed that. Okay. Uh, so item twenty one, uh, review and approve meeting minutes for eleven twelve twenty twenty four AP Standing Committee, eleven fourteen twenty twenty four regular meeting, eleven twenty one twenty twenty four State Update Standing Committee, eleven nineteen twenty twenty four AP Standing Committee, and eleven twenty one twenty four regular state planning and project meeting.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for eleven twelve twenty twenty four AP Standing Committee for eleven fourteen twenty twenty four regular meeting, eleven twenty one twenty twenty four State Update from Standing Committee, eleven nineteen twenty twenty four AP Standing Committee, and eleven twenty one twenty twenty four regular state planning and project meeting uh with any of the amendments that were sent to fifty previous to and after the meeting, as well as any additional amendments for typos or other errors that we may not have caught or that we may need to be corrected.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion comments? Hey, roll call directors. Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Director Schomberg is an I, uh, and that passes four zero zero with one accent, and that's Director Gibson. And so the all of those as read, meeting minutes have been accepted. Okay, last but not least. Uh, discussion vote on future agenda items, item twenty two. Now, we're having a future agenda that we didn't discuss already.
I got nothing.
Okay, hearing none, I will introduce a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second that.
Okay, any objections? All right, roll call directors. Director Garcia, Director Nyman.
Aye.
Director Kelling.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Schomburg is an aye, uh, we are adjourning this meeting at five twenty eight PM, that is four zero zero, one absent.
And all these years I've been here, I've never heard one of you speak up and go, no, I want it going longer.
You won't. Yeah, you won't be here.
See you guys next week, uh, Jonah and Pam.
All right, bye, guys.